To protect public health and, and help limit the spread of the coronavirus have essentially closed their doors to general public access. And the buildings remain in service, meaning employees still come to work and, and work is done and services are rendered, except in the, the changes and instead of walk-up business from the public, we are reliant more on our internet, um, interactions with our customers, certainly by phone, or mail, or, you know, other means. So, uh, again, they're not shutting down county government, but we'd be potentially just limiting public access to our, uh, buildings. And that would go, if you were supportive of that initiative, it would apply to other county buildings as well. Uh, Sheriff is here, as he's already, uh, kind of made that determination with respect to Sheriff's Office facilities, but this would pertain to other, uh, county facilities that are, um, that we oversee.
If I could, Commissioners, I, I just want to let you know that, uh, we've been doing that for a day. It does work very well. I understand that sometimes that's a concern because we, we are governing bodies, and so when you look at delivering those services, uh, sometimes it's, it's difficult to make that decision to, to move and adjust your operations. I strongly support you all in doing that, and to make it easy for the Board and, uh, for county administration, we'd be more than happy to share our plan and how we went about that. And we are still continuing our services. Of course, as you know, we moved to a, try and handle as much over the telephone as possible. We are still there in life-threatening situations, proactive patrols, and operating our jails. So, it's a, it's a, another opportunity to limit, uh, exposure and help flatten the curve. And also, I could see that as an opportunity, based on your earlier discussions, about potentially other, uh, county entities having folks that are additional resources if a certain amount of business is deflected or curtailed.
So have you kind of gone through this, Tom, building by building? I mean, like, this building, you know, there's people that use the clerk's office for passports and marriage licenses and, but, you know, and then there's people that pay property taxes, and there's people that go to the assessors. Are you, are you talking about everybody, or, um, I don't know if all those things are things you can do online, or?
Can I, I'm sorry. Can I just share something? Cause I had the same thought process about your, your questions and your concerns. And what we're trying to do is just create an initial barrier, so we can determine who might need to come in the building or not. So they reach out by telephone and visit with somebody and, and say what they, the kind of business they need to conduct. And then that individual takes that information and determines, oh, hey, we need to bring them up. And then that way, there's the ability to keep social distancing norms in place and sanitation, uh, norms in place, depending on who you need to bring into the facility or where they need to go. Because in some circumstances, uh, our customers are just looking for that resource, and sometimes that resource might be a phone call or a computer away. And so that's, that's what the, the initial step is, Commissioner.
Yeah, no, I, I completely agree with the Sheriff. And to answer your question directly, we have looked at, uh, each of our departments, and, you know, all of them are equipped for, you know, some level of non-face-to-face interaction. And, and by, uh, not allowing essentially walk-up business, that doesn't mean that no citizen will ever come face-to-face with our, um, staff. You know, we can arrange for, you know, uh, special meetings, uh, if it requires, uh, one-on-one interaction, or we bring them in and we, uh, observe the proper social distancing protocols in terms of having them in our office. They will still, our staff will still do their fieldwork, as they have always done, uh, in terms of, uh, whether it's a building inspector, or, uh, you know, assessor out in the field, or a public health nurse out in the field. So that, that continues. This, this essentially just is limited to walk-up business. That said, um, each of our departments, um, with, with variations, obviously pertaining to their operation, are equipped to conduct, um, non-face-to-face business transactions to serve their clients.
So, so do you see it then, that, so somebody, I mean, people don't know this, so they drive down here and they're gonna, they wanna get their marriage license, and they show up at the door here. Is, is the door at the front locked, or is it when they get upstairs, or is, and is there a sign there, and is there a phone there they can call? Hey, I'm outside trying to get a marriage license, I'm outside trying to get my passport, or how does that work?
So Commissioner, I just would like to, uh, now, I don't mean to interrupt here, but I, I just would like to say how, how some of our operations have worked in that realm. Sometimes we can conduct business outside of the building, and so all, all we're looking to do is limit the number of, of people coming into our facilities to just try and reduce any opportunity to spread. And so if there is a marriage license component, and I'm not trying to speak for the clerk, but if, if Nancy possibly had an individual that would, would take the phone call and then come down, uh, outside and say, hey, here, let's, let's take care of this business out here, or there's, uh, you know, can we help you walk through it online? But in some cases, you can't get around an in-person visit, and that's fine, so we still would take that individual into the office and take care, take care of them and their concerns. So it's just really a case-by-case basis for us, and I would imagine we could really work together and share the information that we've had with, uh, administration here and, and make that a very, uh, as smooth and easy as possible for, for those operations.
Jefferson County actually has a pretty smooth plan. Um, they're saying, uh, as of yesterday, yesterday at noon, um, it will be restricted to employees and pre-arranged appointments, um, with citizens, and when they get to their building, they actually have to call from the parking lot, and then people will meet them. And I actually got a call yesterday for a marriage license, so, um, you know, I, I'm, you know, I know people have to come to the building for passports, and they have to come for marriage licenses. I don't think you can do those online.
Right. Well, and, and so we have, we have our phone number, our business line.
Right.
They make a phone call, and then we guide them to where they need to be. And in the events where they don't have a phone, well, uh, you know, we've had folks that wave at us outside the building and, and we'll come make contact. We're just trying to reduce the amount of traffic inside our, our buildings as well.
Eric, did you have?
Uh, yes, I mean, there's different ways of handling it. I think Sheriff Nelson has, has outlined, you know, a good approach. For this building, what we could do is have a, we could have an employee in the lobby should somebody come to the door, and, I mean, a sign on the door of who to call for which types of services, but we could also deploy and, and kind of trade off on, on who staff's, you know, just being downstairs in the lobby in case somebody does not have a phone or their phone battery is dead. Um, and then if the transaction needs to happen face-to-face, we could reserve the, the meeting rooms downstairs, have that interaction happen there, uh, we could clean it after each, each interaction. Um, so I think there's lots of ways we could, we could make it work. Um, we could have, you know, each department will have, could have a, a phone number that the citizen could call, uh, to, to talk about how to, uh, obtain those services. We could also have a general county, you know, one number, where if you don't know who to call, just call that one, and we'll help get the person, um, to the appropriate department. So I think there's lots of different ways to, to effectively manage that.
So there's this temporary policy response to novel coronavirus. Is that what we're talking about here right now, or, I guess I'm trying?
Are you looking at the, the lead policy?
No, no, this, it was just in the packet with this agenda. Let's see, I'm trying to make sure.
Yeah, I think that's the lead policy that you're looking at there.
Okay, yeah, for managers.
That's number six.
Yep.
So is there a written draft policy that I'm, a piece of paper? Yeah, yeah, okay, I'm just making sure I didn't have a piece of paper I was missing.
Again, for, for discussion, if you choose to do it, obviously, with these here, we would, we would make plenty of public notice to, um, alert
Yeah.
The public to this change, as the cities in our county have done and others. So we try and get the information out there as best we can upfront to avoid people coming here and expecting, or to one of our other buildings and expecting to be able to walk in, to be able to, uh, avoid situations like that.
Well, my thought is that we're open for business, we're here to serve, uh, just like Sheriff's, Sheriff's Office, thank you very much. Uh, and it'd be good to take these precautions right now. Sign on the door, call this number, communicate with the, you know, clerk's office, or the assessor's office, or the Board of Commissioners, uh, and revisit this in two weeks, you know. I mean, so, uh, we need to start to look at this as pieces of time to see how it evolves.
I, I personally think, you know, Jefferson County seemed to handle it like what you were saying. And I'm just thinking about, like, the Veterans Office, which is over there, and if we have a veteran coming up, um, you know, just so that somebody like that isn't turned away. I, I think that's, I think we need to be very careful there, Whitney. I don't know what you feel.
Yes, I've talked, I've talked to Keith McNamara. I think each building can be a little bit different.
Right.
And with that building, the Veteran Service has a, office has a lobby, um, so, you know, I picture where people can come into the lobby, and then, uh, staff will interact with them. They've already moved their appointments to, uh, to be on, or through the, the telephone. Um, but should a veteran need to see somebody in person, um, we can accommodate that.
Good.
So that culture of service, hopefully have an eye contact if somebody's standing at the door, or knocking on the door, uh, cause that'd just be the only, uh...
Yeah, I don't, I think we want to avoid, if at all, I mean, to the, to the greatest extent possible, avoid having somebody come to a building, you know, with a question or wanting service and not being able to get in or talk to somebody.
Well, I just thought it was interesting that I got the call for the, uh, marriage license yesterday, and I think it's really important to have just a general number on here. If, if your department, that you're trying to reach, isn't available, please call this number. So, you know, the, the telephone is really critical in this time.
We agree, and as staff, that's something that we've discussed, as Eric said, is, uh, enlisting a general number that folks could call and assisting our residents in finding the appropriate service or department if it's not clear to them. And I think, as Erica said, also having someone downstairs to help navigate, help people navigate, uh, services would be also helpful.
Oftentimes, people call the county and, and it's, they actually need a, a city service, and so if they look down the long list of county departments, um, they wouldn't know who to call, so if we just have that general, if you don't know who to call, you know, one number, we can get them to the right county department or different agency if that's the appropriate spot.
So do you have a plan if we did this, to who's gonna man that phone, and?
I think what we'd...
The structure we're gonna do? I mean, I don't want to do, I wouldn't want to do a computerized...
No, I think, I think we would, we would use our staff and, and, you know, if we could tap staff, I mean, we could take turns from the different departments to, to staff that main line. Um, and then what I picture is, is we would ask each department for, you know, one phone number, and make sure that they have a staff person, and they could internally figure out who staffs their own department number. And, and I think it's important that if, if somebody calls, you know, one of those published numbers, we're, if to the extent possible, that they get a person and not, not a recording.
Yes, by the third ring would be excellent.
So, um, so I don't know if I agree with doing this closure this way. I, um, I can still go to the grocery store today and buy groceries, I can go to a gas station, and I'm talking to a guy right out my window. I'm, I don't know if we're trying to save the, protect the Deschutes County employees, or we're trying to protect the public, but, um, I just don't know at what level, I mean, why, if we're gonna do something like that, I don't really like the knock on the door or call and we go out and meet them in the parking lot thing. I, I just don't, it seems like, okay, so what about, um, building some temporary barrier things like you have in visiting rooms, and, you know, where there's not that complicated, but something that you basically protect the airflow pretty much and, you know, moisture or something that we set up for, I mean, we're looking at a six-week period maybe, where downstairs, we have a couple of those places where people come up and if they're, and, and I'm not sure every office has to go on, be open, like, maybe the assessors isn't really that crucial, but people will do want to pay their taxes when they want to pay their taxes, and they want to maybe say something, or they want to go to the clerk's office, so we have a, you know, some, some way that there's still a connection with the people that want to use our services, rather than just, we'll join in with everybody shutting down, and we'll all wait till the disease is gone. I mean, I, I just don't know that I favor that extreme of a measure. And I, I personally don't like having to do everything on the phone, and I know there's lots of older people that don't, I mean, they don't, or the computer, and so it maybe is reassuring to people to come here and be able to meet somebody that takes care of some little thing, and
I mean, when...
Is there a way to do it with reduced exposure? Like I said, maybe it's in the lobby, maybe it's in this, in a room down here if we end up closing off other activities, or?
I think that, that's a good point. I think there can be variations. For example, in this, in this building, um, you know, we, we could just lock down the, the top floor and then have one person, if somebody comes to the building itself, um, you know, the door's open, and then we, you know, there's a, there's a social distancing between the customer and, and our staff, and then the question is, is how can we help you? Which department do you need? And then that person can help facilitate that service for the person. I mean, I think, I think there's some, some variations and options there. I don't know, from a public health standpoint.
Well, actually, I'm sorry, I had this to back, cause it's something pressing, but for a minute, the, the level of closure you're talking about, is this, are you thinking this includes the Health and Sheriff's Office, or Health Department and Sheriff's Office, or, cause we're, we have a relatively elaborate triage, sanitation, et cetera. We have a lot of clients that, we're doing our best to see everybody who can see, tell health, but we have some clients that are, uh, ill enough that we, we need to touch basis.
Yeah, I, I think the idea is, is that each building would be a little bit different based on the business needs, and, and the Sheriff's Office has, has already implemented some procedures.
We've implemented many measures, some of which you've heard about, and we're happy to do a walkthrough, but I just want to be sure that, that while I actually understand moving as many as possible routine things off-site is a very good strategy, um, I think that we probably do need some granularity, because we don't want, we don't want people that are made much more anxious this way. And I, I don't know the right, I don't actually know the right balance as far as public health goes. You know, I've held forth on this a lot, and last, maybe to tiresome extent, last couple hours. Separation is the best we can offer right now, social, social distancing, so I think we need to do everything possible, but we also need to bear in mind this service ethic and the core mission that we're, we are, at least in our department, the Sheriff's Department, various other organizations, the Veterans Office, uh, through the social safety net as well, and we have to be very careful that we don't unwilling, unwittingly poke holes in that net.
Yeah, for many of our departments, demand for services is going to, has increased, and will continue, will continue to increase substantially.
Well, and I, there's a, there's a balance and a message here. Uh, you know, the social distancing, the, uh, kind of maybe another step to get in the front door instead of just keep coming in, cause there's that awkward situation where five people show up and they five up, end up at the same counter, and then all of a sudden, we have no social distancing. So I mean, you know, the, the intention is there, and so it's a good conversation about, some people are like, yep, I'll call, I'll send an email, and won't even worry about it, or other people are like, man, I just needed to talk to somebody today, uh, and, yeah, it could really help, you know, spur somebody's anxiety, Eric.
With anxiety issues.
I think you all are on the right track, and of course, you have more room out in your lobby than, than we do, and, and I'll tell you...
The size of your lobby's bigger.
What works well, too, is the actual signs that say
Mm-hmm.
Where you should stand, and Eric mentioned that, you can have somebody come in and, like, the HIPAA line, stop here, wait for service, and then, so I think you're on the right...
And we see at the pharmacy already, come to think of it, I mean, there's an opportunity there.
Quite a few places on Tuesday where they decided they'd proceed, they put down tape over six feet.
Yeah.
That's not a very high-tech or very expensive.
Yeah.
Use the painter's tape, the blue kind that you...
But as I say, at the pharmacy, people already kind of expect that and under, understand the general idea for privacy.
Yes, there is no privacy at the pharmacy.
Well, is that enough guidance? I mean, you had some opinions, you know?
Yeah, I'd like to, am I hearing not yet, or no, or let's, or let's go?
I think it needs to go really, um, on a, department by department, like, the veterans, I definitely don't want, if a veteran has come up to the, I think it's better that they are able to go into the lobby of the Veterans Office, and actually, they're there for a specific, you know, they need some help, and they need help in person. Um, there's a lot of people that don't use the internet, and so our signs, like, all of our signage needs to be really big with numbers, like, who can read these numbers on this little sheet of paper? I mean, you know, we need to make it so people can clearly read it, and they can see where, where they can get their help. But I, I think we can come in here and do it, like, in our lobby.
So the answers do a lot, but don't put a, don't lock the front door and put a sign up, I guess?
Yeah.
That's what the answer is, sounds like.
Yeah, don't you think?
Do you agree?
Yeah, I think we should think about that, figure out a way we're still helping people, but, I mean, you're right about veterans, but, you know, to some people, the most important thing's that marriage license, and...
Or their passport.
Yeah.
And I think
They need to go somewhere.
We could work on the, the wording and the messaging. I think the, you know, the, the wording is not closure, it's, it's, you know, we have alternative access. I mean, there's some of the other words we can use.
Right. We're definitely, we're not closed, we, we're here still to serve you, and, um, you know, you may have to just use a teeny bit of a different route, but we are, we're here to serve you.
And also, I think, as Commissioner DeBonne mentioned, you almost lead with the, we're, we're open for business, and then explain the, how we're open for business, you know, lead with, with that.
There'll be different kinds of buildings, I mean, even in the Health Department, there's different, you have different facilities that would probably be dealt with differently, I suppose, or something.
Yeah, we, we have major differences, such as Antler and Redmond.
Yeah.
Very difficult to implement any of the distancing. Most of our other facilities are better, and Antler's the real, the real problem when we get to this, and we're, we're still struggling with how, how we do that.
I know Janet sent out an email this morning, um, you know, for behavioral health, and how they're still serving their, their clients, so I thought that was...
That's usually close, I mean, it's not...
Yeah.
Well, and, and, so I mean, we have, we have patients, we have clients that we have to take daily, we take their medication daily, and then we have to, just Friday, you have a little pack, get them through two more days, and these people, uh, really need very frequentness. It's not just because we don't want them having a potential overdose, it's because we want to lay eyes on them and have a brief conversation each day to see whether or not they're still managing their symptoms, and not seeing those people probably isn't an option, doing it telephonically is probably not an option, so we have to do our best to provide the services, but keep people that meet any of the high-risk criteria as caregivers, uh, out of that picture, but keep doing it. And I'm sure, I mean, the Sheriff's Office and Ben PD face all sorts of things that they still have to manage, and you can't necessarily maintain the, all of these ideal.
So, the other thought, Eric, is so I would look at individual departments, like CDD, maybe they don't want to meet, um, across the table that they currently do, you know, maybe that's too close, but they, they do have a conference room downstairs, so maybe they want to, you know, I would be talking to each department as to how they can proceed.
Absolutely.
And then I don't know if the landfill, I mean, you literally sit and open the window, and the person's right across the window from you, so, you know, is that?
Or you could have a strip right there, so you make it too close.
Yeah.
Throw the money in, right?
Going back to, to Veteran Service and your CDD example, um, you know, they're moving appointments to, to be through the phone, but if that's not available, we would, we could still have appointments in the Veteran Service Office, but typically, the appointments are in our staff's offices, which are, are smaller, but there's a conference room in back that can be used to make sure that there's distancing from, from both, also to protect our, our veterans as well.
So, yeah, the conference room is great.
Yes.
A little bit better guidance?
Is that enough guidance, Eric?
I believe so. It sounds like we are, you know, open for business, we have alternative limited access based on, on the different departments and buildings, and it's important, well, to get the, the word out on how to access those services, but also to be able to interact with customers should they, they come to our building.
Okay.
Madam Chair, before we leave the topic, I, I thought it was going to be a little bit broader, but, uh, I, I have something I'd like to run by the Board, and then if it's, it needs to be a different agenda item, I completely understand, but as far as county business is concerned, some of the things that have come onto my radar that I'm concerned about and have heard questions about in the community is county permitted events, uh, and I'm, I'm looking at June. Uh, I have significant concerns about allowing those events to move forward, especially giving the historical look at Wuhan Province, and the fact that I think it's just leveled the, the, uh, curve or spread of disease has just leveled recently, and, uh, you know, so looking at that as an example, it's been four, I think they thought December, four months, and, and most likely, they think November, five months. And so looking at where we are right now, and five months out, and then hearing the general message from the federal government being, uh, seeing, uh, some, some relief in July or August, uh, and the situation with the schools. I think there's a balance here for those large events that the county permits. Uh, when you take a look at how quickly time is needed for those events to, uh, kind of deconstruct, and when I look at the balance as far as, as commerce, acting on that sooner than later, does the business community a better good? Does the community a better good? Ticket holders a better good? And frankly, your Sheriff's Office a better good? Because there's some significant events in June that I am right now going through the process of questioning how the Sheriff's Office can step up and help, because, as you know, our core function's public safety, and I don't want to put, uh, our teammates in a position where that could be affected by an event that is, uh, basically non, non-essential. And so my concern comes into looking at, well, I'll, I'll mention the Four Peaks Music Festival by name.
Right.
Uh, and, and the fact that I had, uh, visited with some of the, the directors there about our role and what we could provide, because, uh, security companies are canceling venues. As a matter of fact, their security company has canceled the venue, and you know that's a requirement for one of your, your permits, is security at the event. Uh, the Sheriff's Office always tries to be proactive at some of those larger events, because we feel it's, it's essential to public safety. And when you, you take a look at that event and camping on-site in close quarters, and I can guarantee you, social distancing is not going to be on anyone's mind when they're out, uh, you know, enjoying themselves. And so that does bring to the, the forefront of my mind that, uh, canceling those events and, and the ability to try and get, uh, deposits back for business purposes, refunds to ticket holders, um, a lot of that starts to, to come into jeopardy the closer we get to the event.
So you're saying their security company has notified you that they have canceled?
That they notified them, because
Okay, and they...
They were asking how the Sheriff's Office can, can help, and, I mean, that is just, uh, uh, when you, when you boil it down to looking at public safety, we've got to keep our, our teammates healthy, so that we can continue to provide public safety. And so therefore, non-essential functions have to go.
Okay.
So we're talking about mass gathering events three months from now, basically?
Well, I, I think, I, I mean, definitely, and I'll defer to my colleague as far as
Yeah.
Is it going to get worse before it gets better?
It's, it's, it's going to get worse before it gets better, and we don't know how long either will take.
And, and so, events in June have to go.
And there are two types of events. I mean, there's the ones that CDD permits, the outdoor mass gatherings, and then there's also ones that Risk Management permits, that, events that use the public rights away, it tends to be the, the marathons and the bike races and things like that. Um, those are handled through, the permit itself, it handles, is handled through Risk Management. We work closely with all of the departments, including the Sheriff's Office, on permitting those events. Um, on the risk side, we're pulling together the list of events, the date they're scheduled to, to occur, and, uh, the number of participants, participants that...
You're pulling that together now?
Yes, yeah, and then we'll review that and, and...
Thanks, Eric. Mine would be any events that are involving deposits, because I'm also trying to look at the economic impact here. We're going to have an economic impact, there's going to be some form of, of recession or slowdown in the economy, and I think everyone understands that. What my point is, is if we can have, if we can lessen the economic impact by making those decisions early and now, that's what we should do.
And the event...
And their marketing budgets.
Well, any deposits, any ticket holding events, and, and I'm sorry, Eric, I don't know the specific events you might be talking about, but
Sure.
Any events that involve deposits, ticket sales, entry fees that are paid, because these organizations, if you get closer to the event, I, and I'm not saying every organization would do this, but I'm sure every organization might have language in there that it's non-refundable. And so when you look at the economic impact of trying to do what's right by the audience or the attendees, as well as the business, or the vendor who's trying to put on the event, I think that's the most fair and balanced way to approach that.
Um, Commissioners, obviously, the, as you know, the Four Peaks is a, um, act... Commissioners, obviously, the, as you know, the Four Peaks is a action, permit issued through our CDD department, so I think to revoke that would take a special action of the board. Certainly, planning staff can work with the organizer of that to find out what their plans are. They may have already come to the same conclusion based on, based on the lack of availability. So, we would do that, could, certainly could do that initial reach out and then report back, and if...
Sorry, Tom. Full disclosure, when I was visiting with them about our services, I, I said, "I'm going to move that your event be canceled." I mean, just being upfront, and that they understood and, and were supportive. And I know there's other...
They were supportive?
Well, they, I'll say they, they understood why we wanted to move forward, but they're trying to find another security company. They're not going to find another security.
But see, they're going to have the, the same thing that our county or the people that were going to use the fairgrounds had, which was, it's really on them to follow Oregon State law that says no gatherings over 25 people. So, how can they, I mean, we can, we can tell any organization that they can't do what they're planning to do, but those organizations also have to follow their own, the law.
I understand that.
Don't you think?
What I'm saying, Commissioner, is, you know, everybody's moving at 30 or 60-day increments, when in reality, this is a four, five, six-month increment deal.
Yeah.
And I, I understand the reason for moving at 30 and 60-day increments, but in the law enforcement business, and I'll, I'll drag my friend, Dr. Conway, into it as well, we don't just move in 30, 60-day increments, because we know that we're just getting delayed reaction. And so, my point of view is, hey, we, you know, we're the, the governing body of these things, let's make the decision for them and make it early, because to me, that is less painful, affect on everybody involved.
How long ago did it get canceled, do you know?
What's that?
Their security. Did you talk to them last week?
I didn't ask them when it got canceled. They were just sharing with me that the security company had canceled any events throughout the summer.
Okay.
And that they were actively looking for more security. And so, I, I mean, obvious in the room, sheriff's office has a dog in this fight, right? Because we're about public safety. If I had the authority to do so, I would have already canceled them through the end of June.
Well, and I support just getting the bigger picture, community development, where's the decision space? You know, maybe it's already self-canceled because of not having this capacity. So, as I say, I don't know that I'd be supportive of making that decision right here, but let's make it in the near future for...
And, and I'm just saying, from the outlook, we're looking at 30, 60-day increments, so by, by nature, so's everyone else. And when you take a look at the economic impact that this potentially can have, we have the opportunity to make the, a great decision right now and just, and just take care of it through June. And then you can assess it in two weeks to a month. And look, I'm not trying to downplay the conversation about this. I understand the implications here, but these are unique and challenging times.
Well, they moved the Kentucky Derby, and that had only been moved once, in the history of the race, from the 1800s to September, and they moved the French Open, end of May to September. So, you know, those huge venues have all been moved, at least they're moved at this point in time.
The Pendleton Roundup, huh?
The Pendleton Roundup, well, that's not, that's September.
Yeah.
I agree. But if the commission cancels those events, then it's on the, on the vendors and the organizers determining where, where they want to postpone those, too.
Yeah.
I think if, if we just cancel them, then, then we're enough ahead.
So, Dave, we need to look at that.
Yeah, there's certainly some legal issues if the commissioners were to unilaterally cancel a mass gathering permit. That's based on state statute, that's a shall issue, and so, we have very limited discretion. And if the governor's order, which expires on April 14th, is not renewed, I agree with the sheriff, I have every belief it will be, but unless and until it is, you would be taking that kind of unilateral, like, action, and the event sponsors certainly could, could withdraw their application and elect not to go forward. So, I think we'd probably need to consider some of the, the impacts and, and issues.
We always want to have county councils' good advice. I'm just saying, as soon as legally able to do so, we need to act. I really appreciate you all's time, and I really appreciate you listening to my input.
Oh, appreciate hearing that.
Thanks. You're welcome.
Have a good day. Take care.
Appreciate your hard work and partnership.
Thank you, Nathan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Okay. Okay, where are we?
Number five, he's going to cover real quick.
Okay. Whitney?
We wanted to check in with the board about any thoughts you may have on the status of continuation of board meetings. There are a few options, obviously, there are more than a few options in how that might look. It could look unchanged, it could be the way that it is today, in that we're, we're trying to limit in-person participation in this room out of respect for social distancing. Sharon has also done a lot of work to set up options that would enable you to livestream the meeting and take email comments in terms of getting citizen input and other things. That's a lane we could explore, and then I believe she also has a third option set up that would be completely virtual, where we could actually have folks be in different locations, should that be necessary. But I think for today, just, we wanted to get feedback from the board on how you'd like your, your future meeting schedule to look and the format in which those meetings might be conducted.
Okay. So, you're saying, like, we had it before, or like we have it today, or you're saying virtual?
Correct.
Okay. All right. So, feedback?
Generally, I think that, you know, we, we should have meetings when needed, agenda items will get mature and need, decisions may need to be made. So, other than that, I'm very flexible about, I could be, I could be virtual, I could be on the phone, on a video, I could, anything.
Another option would be, set it up more like, I mean, this is, we're all pretty close here, we could set it up like the, we do when we do the joint meetings, and around that kind of square table, and, you know, we could, there'd be more room to spread out if we wanted to do that. I mean, so, that may be reasonable and...
Right. And I think there are obviously options with that. I think there have been some jurisdictions where governing bodies have opted, that there may be limiting meetings or maybe canceling meetings, but if the board does want to continue to meet, I think staff was looking for direction on sort of, I know for Sharon in particular, is there a number of people in the room that she, that you would feel, is it 10 people in the room? Kind of getting some guidance on that, and then also, we would obviously continue to communicate and encourage folks to participate with us virtually as much as possible to limit the amount of folks in the room, if, if that's the direction.
We know we have 11 people in the room.
So, and I mean, each one of us could have...
But we're not really, you know, we're pretty spread out, I mean...
Oh, we're in two rooms.
Ah!
Thank you, Eric.
I guess I don't, the one problem I have is that, I mean, the point of having public meetings is to allow the public to be here, so it's kind of a weird, I mean, they can't really participate virtually, they just can watch it like everybody, they have been able to forever, but we're not really having participation by people. And so, if we, I don't know if we have any hearings coming up, but we're going to have to do something different if we have hearings where people can come in and testify and leave, I guess, but I don't know.
I know virtual meetings, I believe you were, they have some ability to type in questions, and so there is some communication.
There are some options for that. You're right. In terms of if folks wanted to join a virtual meeting, they could type a question, they could call in on the phone and give, you know, they could ask a question over a, a phone line. We could take questions or comments via email, and they could be read aloud in a meeting. I believe those are all options that would kind of continue to facilitate the processes that you are used to, but it would be different in the fashion that they were being communicated.
And I'm thinking for us, for everybody in this room, in fact, I mean, we all have our own circle of connections, so, you know, there may be a day that if, if somebody's quarantined, self-quarantined, diagnosed with whatever, I mean, I, I could be required to be at home pretty quick, too. So, I think we need to have the options on the table, so even if we're intending and having public meetings for, you know, any of us to be here virtually.
Does it help to limit the number of meetings? Like, instead of a two-a-week, we have one a week, or we have, you know, some other structure to, I mean, we...
Tom, do you have thoughts?
Well, I mean, to the, to the extent that part of your motivation for doing this is limiting public exposure, then yeah, one less meeting would, would go towards that. I think what, what we're trying to do is just kind of, first of all, get, get your perspective on this. If, and what I've heard so far is that it's important to continue meetings, which we certainly can do. We can, we can defer certain types of items that we would put on meetings, that, you know, like the, the nonprofit presentation or an update, those sorts of things. We can wish out, which, you know...
Rewards.
Yeah, yeah, those, those sorts of things. And, and, you know, public hearings are a little bit different. We can, we can pilot things, we can experiment with what works, and, and we can use the other rooms down here for, you know, additional seating with, say, video feeds to make that easier for people to be present. We can monitor the counts in each room to, to ensure that we're, you know, again, complying with the requirements of the state. But, you know, I, I think it, it's hard to kind of define everything on a one-size-fits-all sort of directive, but if we can be, just be more prudent when we set up our meetings, I think that might get us there. And, and probably with the idea of we, we kind of hold off on Allen Room meetings for the time being, since it's harder to keep our distance, I, I think Commissioner Henderson may have suggested for, say, an executive session, we could meet in DeArmond, where we're more spread out and kind of around the square and we're able to interact better.
Well, we all know that Deschutes County is going to be impacted to a high level, and I feel like our meetings are going to be very important, that the people in the community know that we are, we are working for them and we are trying to stay on top of things as much as we possibly can. So, I feel like having the meeting in this situation is, is good with 10 people in the room and 10 or 11. And, you know, and then there may be the case where one of us does have to quarantine themselves, whatever, and, you know, we should be able to do that. We should be easily able to, you know, bring that in, like, if we have to do like a FaceTime or something in order to be part of the conversation.
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Whitney.
Can we take a break?
A break?
1:15?
Sure.
We've got a couple more items still.
Okay. A 10-minute break or a half an hour break? Okay. So, how big of a break are we going to take?
Well, if you gave me 10 minutes, I'd, I'd use it.
Okay. Let's take a 10-minute break, everyone? Whitney, 10-minute break? Thank you. Okay. Kathleen?
Item number six. So, first, thank you for the earlier discussions regarding, I think, building access. It's, you know, I think a good conversation, and we've been hearing a lot from departments who've actually issued guidance earlier on social distancing and helping front counters kind of work with that, social distancing, to make sure that the employees feel safe as well as being able to balance providing those crucial services. I think what we still are seeing is that there are, there are folks who are not able to work right now due to various scenarios, which is why we have the, in front of you, the temporary policy response to novel coronavirus, COVID-19, really focusing on leave needs in some of these more emergent situations and addressing, you know, school closures, especially with the notice that came out sort of yesterday regarding extension of that. So, the policy, and I've, the policy itself identifies certain scenarios in which we would provide sort of maybe some, I'll say, enhanced options for folks who do need to take leave. And the, the main areas that we're looking at is ensuring that folks have the access that they need. So, providing things like, if, the, the idea is that employees would use their own leave or if necessary, go into an unpaid leave status, that the stigmas around the leave, we have certain policies that require additional health benefit, payments for health benefits, et cetera, or count as unscheduled absences, those negative consequences would be removed if they're utilizing unpaid leave in regard to their, their absences with the coronavirus. The other piece that we're, we're requesting consideration is a negative TML, vacation or sick leave balance, so up to a combined maximum of about two weeks scheduled work. So, the idea that employees, if they need, if they end up in that unpaid status, could access future leave earnings right now with the idea that it'd be at a two-week scheduled work week. This policy, I will say, there is under the review period that we will continue to review this every 14 days and evaluate if additional or different components of the policy need to be reviewed, considered, brought to you.
Okay. Well, this morning, I think Home Depot said they were giving their employees 80 hours of sick pay for this specific issue. So, I'm glad that we had the meeting yesterday.
Right, right.
So, my thoughts, you gave us that spreadsheet, so I, I'm comfortable with the one borrow against future TML accrual. As you explained, it's probably different than Home Depot, the, our leave policies are pretty extensive, as it is, up to five weeks, you know, or six weeks per year. So, I would do the, up to one week now, and then see how this, you know, maybe it pans out, but I, maybe we could do two, because we know school's going to be out. I'm really still more concerned with all the people's, the impact of school being out is probably more, will catch more people than the medical part of this will for the, for, you know, for now. I don't know when it changes, but, but like next week, everybody thought they were going to be out anyway, so, you know, for spring break, so, and there's a certain part of parenting that we expect to oversee our kids some weeks of the year, but not, not six weeks.
Some weeks, yeah.
Well, it's a hassle, you know, for anybody.
It's a wonderful thing for families to rediscover themselves.
No, it is, you know, it really, well, some families might think that, but I, I think most families are going to think it's hard to do their job and watch their kids, so, because it's, we've gotten used to not, but, so I'm, I'm in favor of that middle column.
So, you're referring to unpaid leave at this time?
Yeah, well, the, the borrow against future...
Yeah, a negative, yep, yep.
I didn't really, I don't really feel a need to do the other steps unless things like the bank, hardship bank and the proportional reduced leave usage until, I don't know, maybe, you know, how long things go on, or how many people actually get sick versus parenting things, I guess, is how I feel.
The fact that our average employee has been with Deschutes County eight years, nine months, per my last check, is pretty significant. I would hope that they would have things built up, but if we can give them, you know, those that don't have it, you know, to borrow from the future, I think seems really appropriate.
Well, and putting this in perspective, so this is the whole organization, there's different representative groups, management levels, department heads and everything in here, right? So, this is kind of the one, the one document laying out for everybody. Is that correct?
Currently.
Yeah, I think this, this goes beyond what our current contracts allow in, in, in the negative balance. There are, we don't have provisions that cover that situation, other than being in unpaid status currently in any of our contracts, including the non-rental.
Yeah, so, go into that, the policy of going negative and the time management accrual is, yeah, first time we'd be doing that.
Well, at least since my tenure.
Yeah, okay. This is true.
And, and I would say that, you know, we've heard a bit back from employees who, you know, are aware that next week was a break, but had counted on camps or something like that to be, that maybe aren't occurring. And so, you know, this would be in addition to the ideas that we are looking for opportunities for remote work or alternative work to be done. Limiting access, you know, will be helpful in employees feeling more secure about being in work areas. We've talked a lot about creating, limiting access, you know... who have, we did a count recently, 25% have 80 hours or less of time management on their account, and that could be because they're a new employee, maybe they're just returning from a prior medical issue, or maybe they take a lot of time off, right? There are many options there. But I do think that that we will see some utilization of this for sure.
So Commissioner Henderson, what was your, were you, so there it was kind of started off by staff saying two weeks negative time management. Did you support that or were you saying one? I forget.
Well, I think up to two is fine.
Yeah, okay, just making sure.
We've got six weeks of school off, and that's going to affect a lot of people, and if people do get sick, it's going to take time, so I guess that's that's fine with me, I guess.
Yeah, so two weeks.
On item four B, the 30 days of unpaid leave without the requirement to pay a pro-rata rated portion of their health insurance premium, what is it now? This is this is better, isn't it? Or this is more beneficial to the employee?
Correct. So current policy states that if you have 40 hours of unpaid leave in a month, you pay a higher proration of your health insurance, and so.
Unless it's protected leave.
Unless it's protected leave.
I think that's important to point out.
And so this would be eliminating that. And I and I will also say that there is additional guidance coming out on on, well, in the the bill about expanding potentially protected leaves beyond this. So we will continue to evaluate protected leaves as consideration in this.
So there could be some federal and state things that come down real fast that define this for us.
Correct.
As fast as we're trying to make the decisions.
Just the the co-pays, my understanding that the actual cost, and I'm assuming the co-pays to make up that difference is substantial in the.
It is, right.
Right, so what I would ask, I think this is a very helpful measure, I think, especially because the school closures have now been announced through April.
Twenty-eight.
Yeah, I would recommend that there be at least some homage to being able to extend this as necessary depending upon the emergency, because what we don't want to do is, we don't want to put somebody that's protractedly in an absence and then potentially jeopardize and they're they have, because this is, this talk about unpaid leave, so they're already in a in a crater as far as their finance goes, and then they face at this very dire time of health risk, potentially not being able to afford to cover those co-pays, I think is really a very unfortunate circumstance. We should do everything possible to avoid.
What you were suggesting to review this as it happens.
Every 14 days, if we review.
I'm supportive of, yeah, we're going to need to keep an eye on this.
Yeah, a very close eye.
So, yeah, this temporary policy, I guess, so remember the previous agenda item or two, I wasn't sure if this is what this was or, so the agenda says leave policy, but it didn't say leave anywhere in the first part of this. I wasn't sure.
About that.
Yeah, no, so that's why that when I asked about if this is the agenda item attachment. So I'm just maybe put that up front at the top of this.
One thing I do want to comment on, though, talking to someone in private industry, he made the comment that people that do remote work, he has a really hard time paying them for what he normally pays, their work when they're in within the walls of the company. So we just really need to make sure if people are working remote, that they really are working for the county.
Absolutely, and actually HR earlier this week issued guidelines, remote work guidelines, a two-page how supervisors and employees should interact regarding their work product, and there's also an agreement for that. So we are taking measures and working with departments to help identify what remote work would look like for individuals.
Yes, I see those two references on the document, so, thank you.
Well, and there, you know, it is responsibility of the employee to take that, you know, that responsibility, I guess, of those work products and then understanding the management relationship of the definition of what's deliverable. So, I mean, this is going to change some of the jobs a little bit also.
So Dave, do we need a motion to accept this document?
I think you would need a motion to approve the temporary policy response to novel coronavirus. It doesn't appear to have a number, but I think that'd be sufficient to identify it.
I'll move approval of the temporary policy response to, I think, is it novel coronavirus COVID COVID-19 is or novel, what's, I don't know, anyway.
Maybe it'll tomorrow.
Base or.
I always thought they were using the word novel like unique.
Yeah, they might.
I don't know. I don't know.
I'll second it.
Okay, any further discussion?
So the policy guidelines, kind of number one, A, B, and C talks about, so we're kind of putting a new procedure. Here's a new form, fill it out, have your signature, your manager sign it. So I'm just acknowledging that's what we're adding here also. It isn't just, you know, the opportunities for the sick leave bank is or opportunities, as we mentioned, there is a procedure for this.
There is, there's procedures. In fact, I was on the phone this morning with payroll coordinating, you know, how we're going to manage this, how we're going to track it.
We just created a new form.
We did.
Or we didn't vote on it yet.
Yeah.
We haven't voted yet, and we did discuss yesterday that there were some employees that were taking trips because the air flight is so reasonable and.
There are some travel that is occurring.
Plans.
Okay. And I understand that there's, that the, I think, county council and HR are working on some guidance policy around travel, so that would probably be coming to you soon as well.
Okay, all right.
So and just, so it's clear, I mean, this is a, it's the first time it's been done since you've been here. I don't know if it's been done before that, but I, this is kind of an extraordinary measure, really, for what, I mean, we have a leave policy that's built built for normal sickness, normal knee, health needs, et cetera, so this is really because of the extraordinary circumstance.
It is, yeah, I I would say it's a it's a measure that we're seeing other organizations implement as well, so some of our other local agencies as well.
Okay. Any further discussion? Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. DeBoeck?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes.
Thank you.
Great job, great work product. I know that there was multiple meetings on this and just kind of getting the feeling of of us also before this, so as individuals, so the product came together real well.
Thank you. Great. So we have our add-on. Oh, now we have our lunch recess.
Well, there's two other things on our agenda.
Givens is available.
Oh.
So one is other BOCC and the other's progress on SBA. So one thought I've had today watching this is that I think there's a need as commissioners to talk about what we know is going on. I mean, we've all learned things from each other today about things we've seen or done and and separate from getting updates from department heads, et cetera. So as an item, and really, we could do it at a different meeting or something too, but I I think it's important, like, who have you talked to, what are you working on, and especially if we want to have a united message, we we all have the same knowledge. It seems like that'd be a good thing to actually include. We kind of did it today by through this, but but I I do think it's good to have kind of a united board in terms of what we're trying to accomplish or what avenues we work on. I sensed, you know, I sense that from others too, so I don't know, what do you think of that?
No, I do think it's really important. I did hear from Congressman Walden's office in between our meeting today, and she felt that Oregon was going to be head filed. She was checking for us to make sure, at least for the small business loan.
Yeah.
Applications, because there were more people coming through, and I know Dave's here now, so maybe he can address that in a second. And the other thing I said, I sent another message to Congressman Walden's office to Nick, saying, Nick, we are still short of supplies, and where are they? So I'm hoping, because he's in Bend, that he will.
So I gave up on that, that's why I contacted Wyden's office today for the first time, and I'm going to, was going to call, contact BJ to see, because I I've been surprised that Congressman Walden's office hasn't been more responsive, because he was on the committee. He has a lot of knowledge about healthcare and he has a lot of connections in healthcare. He knows the heads of the these agencies, and I'm surprised, I mean, I told you about the response I got was, well, they're not even using the testing they're they're getting, so why do you, it's like, well, so now we've heard it two ti- two different meetings this week, so if you can get something from them, that's good, but, you know, that I've kind of given up on just one avenue. And like, I didn't know, I don't know, I have any idea what Sherry Health's doing or why, why, you know, are we, should we be connecting with her, or maybe you are, but I'm not, I mean, but it's, it's all disjointed, and so I'm reading certain things on the news that, and then you're doing, you know, Tony was doing the research on testing and.
Right, well.
It's just good to have discussion. Anything else you've learned that you haven't shared with the party?
Sherry, well, you know, Sherry did, you know, last week asked to have people have their the refund, not wait till you have your, actually have to file your return, because that deadline, I think, has been posted out aways. But you have to file a return, but I don't think you have to pay until July 15th now. I think that was a federal ruling that's coming through on the state also on tax returns. But Sherry said that there's a $1.5 billion kicker and the state should actually get that money. Did you see that? That she was, she actually stepped to the forefront and asked for that and said, hey, state government, you need to send that money back to the people because the people are really hurting, and I thought that was a very bold but necessary fact. I, you know, the kicker can only be used when you actually file and pay, and that's money sitting in the state coffers that should come back. She had asked, you know, she's been pushing on OHA, but, you know, you have to remember, OHA hired a businessman to run it, and so we've got a businessman running it, trying to get cost containment, and yet why is Hills?
Well, yeah, but I just don't, I don't, I'm with you, I don't get why they can't double their capacity.
No, I don't get it either.
With all the college students that are out or the, maybe the, you know, U of O medical students are out, why can't they do testing or, you know, it's just.
It doesn't make sense.
We're talking about billions of dollars and yet you can't double your capacity.
You can't go for.
It's very interesting that that we don't have a good answer to that, but it's clear we're not, it's not like you asked, the question, why isn't it growing and nobody really knows.
I think we need to talk to, like, someone who's in med school and find out what their feedback is. I mean, you know, Oregon's supposed to have a good med school, so why.
Well, it does have a good med school.
So why isn't the lab, you know, but probably Washington State, or Washington's is probably higher.
What do you think, Tom? The Husky med school is probably.
But but it's interesting that we don't have an answer for that.
We don't have a real answer.
And we have probably as much, I mean, OHA's as much as servant, as the person that that Dr. Conway was talking about was the one that gave the briefing at AOC last week, that Deanna Crum.
Deanna was here when she gave the award for our health department. She was the woman that was here, and she, you know, feels like, you know, our our Deschutes County.
Maybe that'd be the person we get ahold of to find out why they're not stepping up.
What's going on, yeah.
But even the governor said last night, it was one of her press releases, was about how we've only gotten 1,000, received 1,000 testing units. It's like, so she's declaring an emergency, she's shutting down, you know, changing all these things, but yet she can't get more testing. It's just interesting.
I talked to Dr. Wattenberg this morning, he, because he's on the radio every day now. He'll be on at 6:30 every morning with KPND, and he said he can actually test in his office, but you have to fall, you have to, you know, pass all the parameters, you know, you have to have a problem, you have to be an age or an underlying condition, but he can do the testing.
Remember, he can take a sample in his office.
Right.
He's not going to do the PCR test, which takes four hours and a lab with the, you know, infrastructure, so that, I mean, we've got to be clear about what we're talking about here.
That's a good point.
No, but he, but at least he can do the test and send it on.
He can take a sample and send it on for a test.
Right.
The test is really what they do.
Yeah, so and that's the dynamic right now. I, you know, I'm sure there's people that would do whatever they can to double testing capacity, and just assumption on my part, I don't have facts either.
Double?
But no, my point is, you know, the Hillsboro lab, there's people that are working hard on that, and we don't know facts about what are the limiting factors for being able to double it.
We've heard it's been about two weeks now, and we've heard the capacity's the same.
Yeah, yeah, so we don't have facts, I'm just acknowledging, yeah.
But then you look at the fact that the state website crashed again yesterday for unemployment insurance applications. It crashed again, according to the email we got from the culinary people. So it's, you know, it's like, there's a lot of things happening that aren't actually being, you know, positive.
So one of the things I've thought about for the, what the county could do to help people is, so there's this need now for the only outsourcing of food is, you know, delivery or drive-up. Is there, can can we create a database of people that do delivery or of restaurants that need drive-through or what, you know, I don't know, is there, is there anything the county can do to help facilitate connecting people that aren't normally connected? Because we do have a platform, we do have a webpage, we do have a way to get press out, I mean, that'd be a, I, that's beyond the scope of what we cover with all the department heads, but it's a thing that we could show leadership on somehow if we had an idea to do it. Because I am worried about this, the effect on people of just having no contact and then not being connected, and a lot of people do depend on restaurant food for their one good meal. I mean, that's true.
They do, they definitely depend.
Or the, you know, and I saw some, Newport had instituted that, Newport Market Institute of Early Morning Shopping, which we talked about, but, you know, could.
And so is Target, Target also is.
You know, is that just up to every company to think about it themselves or would, you know, I'm just thinking about what we can do to help on stuff, because there's not really a disaster, broad-scope disaster part of it. It's health and safety is the first tier, but then there's all this other tier of things that are being affected.
Well, I thought it was a good idea, the council for the aging, the fact that.
Yeah, it was interesting.
Do the food, and if they could actually expand and take over for the kids' food that's at the specifically at all the schools where they have to pick it up at like 11:30 on, you know, every day, and, you know, that would probably really be helpful if they have the capacity to, you know, pick up that need.
Yes, I mean, I'm not bringing any other updates for commissioners right now, there is lots of information. This is just, you know, unprecedented, how we're going to really be able to do the action. Let's make sure to empower our employees to, you know, feel safe to do their job. You know, we just did the HR policy for leave and, you know, possibly go negative in a leave bank, there's policy choices. There's great incident management that we heard about, you know, and we have to digest what they're even working under, you know, Nate, because we we did the emergency declaration after I asked, well, when do we go there? I said, oh, that was us last week. But, you know, that was, the JIC was set up before the incident management. Now there's an incident command and the business of, you know, keeping track of everything, getting authorization for these orders for emergency supplies. There's a lot of moving parts right now. Yeah, so I mean, I'm not bringing anything else to share.
We just got an email from Four Peaks Music, and they realize there is uncertainty whether they're going to have, be able to have their event or not. So they just sent us an email.
That's all I had on that item.
Dave, did you want to come up and let us know, since you're working with Nathan?
Yeah, Dave Givens, County Internal Order, High Commissioners. Tom kind of tasked me with helping out a citizen who had a question about getting through their SBA kind of disaster loan and stuff like that. So that kind of sent me on the trail of working with Nathan and getting some information from some of the community members on some of this stuff. So I'd say it's pretty spotty at best because we still are trying to get the Oregon declaration. From what I understand, they have five or more of these injury forms from Deschutes County, and that's what they needed to, from us. So the the kind of ball is in the state's court. I've been trying to get statuses as to what their timing is. I haven't been able to get anything in terms of real specifics in terms of when they're going to do that. I did talk to the SBA, so the SBA is still waiting on funding. kind of disaster loan and stuff like that. So that kind of sent me on the trail of working with Nathan and getting some information from some of the community members on some of this stuff. So, um, I'd say it's pretty spotty at best because we still are trying to get the Oregon declaration. From what I understand, they have five or more of these injury forms from Deschutes County and that's what they needed to, from us. So the, the, the kind of ball is in the state's court. I've been trying to get statuses as to what their timing is. I haven't been able to get anything in terms of real specifics in terms of when they're gonna do that. I did talk to the SBA, so the SBA is still waiting on funding.
If I could just interrupt, I actually, as I speak, I just received an email from AOC that indicated that the state of Oregon has met the threshold for SBA relief. The governor will be applying on behalf of the entire state.
And I heard from Congressman Walden's office, from Larissa, the Chief of Staff, that the state has submitted their disaster application late last night, so things are in progress. We'll keep you posted. But Morrell County was already, you know, there were a few counties that were already on the list. And the SBA did change the regulations, so somehow that didn't get in, implemented into the change, unfortunately.
Yeah, I think those couple Oregon counties were there because they're contiguous with the Washington declaration that happened.
You mean, Morrell County because it was on the Columbia River?
Well, some of the ones along the hook.
Yeah, the Columbia River and because of Washington State, they got to come in, huh?
Yeah, I think that's, yeah, it was a Washington, uh, declaration that they're associated with.
Okay, well, that makes perfect sense. Yeah, that makes perfect sense. All right.
So the other thing I wanted to mention, just, just from passing is, is, as George mentioned, um, and I think has mentioned a couple of times that the EOC, the, um, the Health Services has stood up a person to help businesses, um, with some of their issues. So, um, Whitney, uh, that's the point person and I've been told that, you know, maybe you will focus, get more information to them.
I don't quite get that. I don't understand how health knows anything about businesses. So I, I, I heard that too this morning, that that, that was what they've done. It's like, it seems odd to me. I mean, I'm.
Well, we're a team and, and we'll support each other. So, I mean, I'm, I.
No, but we're talking about businesses. What are they gonna advise them on? I mean, I, I can see us having somebody that helps people file, uh, something with the SBA or somebody that says, gosh, you're a restaurant, you're having trouble delivering food. Let's see if I can help, uh, you find, uh, delivery services or, but I just don't get why. It just seems odd to me to have health doing that because that's, they're the least knowledgeable about that kind of thing, in my opinion. So, I don't, I, I'm not sure why it wouldn't be an admin person or a CDD person or something. So I'm just curious how they ended up in the hel- business, business.
Dave, maybe you can help with this. Yesterday I had a call from Suzanne, um, who owns Red Martini in, um, Redmond. She's doing to-go with her res- with her restaurant and she was trying to do, to, um, to help with her bottom line, market like martinis to-go and OLCC said that they were six weeks behind and they wouldn't approve it. Anyway, so I said, I mean, you've got to be.
Can you imagine the delivery people? Well, you know, I don't, I don't have your order.
Anyway, her, her, Suzanne was, was previously married to the Chief of Police in Redmond, so she knows the rules. And, but she said other states in the nation have already like tried to help out restaurants so that they can stay alive. And, um, so that's something. But then I saw on Facebook last night that another pizza place actually said you could buy pizzas and wine from their facility and get them and pick them up to go. So are they following the rules?
I, I can't point on that. I don't know.
Okay, well, I mean, I just, you know, I, I just think we need to do something to help these restaurants because we're losing thousands of people to unemployment because, um, it's really difficult.
Should we be talking to Dave about that or should we be talking about, to Tom about who we get to help with that stuff? I mean, that's.
Right, who can help with that?
Well, yeah, Commissioners, I had several things that I was, I could say. First of all, just to get Commissioner Henderson's question about how come a health depart- health department individual at the EOC, um, the EOC is, uh, I mean, it was originally they had an incident, incident command set up at health because this was a health-related pandemic. Then they joined forces with the sheriff's office, with Nathan. Now they have a combined incident command. So that, through their, the NIMS process that Nathan described earlier, they have a logistics section, a planning section, an operations section and so forth. So they take all the, all the people that they have there and they start assigning jobs, assigning roles. So because the health department was there, evidently the, the person that Nathan referenced got assigned under the emergency management structure, you know, sort of coordinating resources for business. So that, I think that's how that happened. But I totally agree that she's not a business advocate. She's not a person who would be lining up resources, consulting or advising businesses on potentially how to apply for SBA assistance or guiding them in some way. I think that becomes part of the, um, now going forward, uh, the, the initial stages of recovery. And, um, Patty and Tony were at a, you know, recent seminar, uh, that the sheriff's office put on, on improving our recovery aspect of what we do. And there's, there was a business group, we were in the governance group, there was a business group also. So I think, and as part of that exercise and what I'm leading to is part of the, the, you know, who would be the best person to advise businesses on connecting them with, uh, SBA assistance or any other assistance through the state that, that may be available? That's where I think even more so than someone from admin or CDD would be someone from, who does that now? Like EDCO is our economic development branch. We've got, there is a Business Oregon office here in Bend, uh, representing central Oregon who does, coordinates federal assistance already. So I think our role could be, you know, with your direction or, or, uh, other direction that you might have, that we could line up, kind of take what, um, EOC has done so far, what David and Nathan have learned so far and, and engage someone who already is skilled in advising business to kind of take it to the next step. Whitney would be involved in that also and, and Morgan to kind of publicize that, to, to put that as part of our, our COVID page to, whatever else might be necessary to market that available assistance for the business community.
So NIMS, National Incident Management System or Scenarios or whatever it is, NIMS. So, you know, sometimes these acronyms are going, so, uh, as I say, I don't know much about the position and I'm just gonna deduce that this is the person whose job is that when somebody calls in, they can quickly send it to that person, then they've got to figure out how to kind of adjudicate and send it off to the business people. So it's really the capacity to be there, they're an employee of the county already and then now they're dispatching, connect, and connecting people. We can learn more. I'm just saying that's what I would assume is going on.
One opportunity would be, uh, a group like Opportunity Knox. I don't know if they're still around, but Jim Schell who's done lots of advising, you know, would, would, he knows somebody or has somebody that would, you know, could fill in if we don't have a specific person that we could even contract with. But, um, or ask us what kind of guidance we might want to be giving to businesses. Cause I, again, it's just what, there aren't, you know, people to reach out to necessarily that are very clear to most of the world. Most people, we haven't gone through this before, for one thing, without, you know, the economy, we, the government decides we're gonna close everything down and that's a good policy, but we've never seen this before. We've seen economics shut stuff down. Unless you lived through World War II, you haven't seen it like this. I mean, we really haven't. So, those are good ideas. So you'll explore that, Tom, and find out kind of further that idea?
Absolutely.
EDCO's a great choice, I think, if they have somebody that we shift that for the time being. Cause I'll bet the business recruiting business is slow these days. I mean, nobody's moved doing anything, yeah.
Another idea is, uh, banks. Um, there were a couple, uh, banks represented at the recovery, um, Mid-Oregon Credit Union and, and, uh, First Interstate were both there. And, you know, who do business consulting and would have potentially or presumably a line on any federal state assistance that might be out there that could help, so we can reach out to them as well.
So the board knows Roger Lee is actually scheduled to come in next week to meet with you, um, so.
I know, he just sent an email. I just haven't read it yet.
Okay, he'll be here next week.
So, uh, Dave, I mean, I'm just envisioning the products that'd be valuable. So kind of a, a graphic of information flow, you know, business owner looking for help. If either they're calling the incident management, cause I'm just lost, or they're calling SBA directly, what can they apply for? I'm just thinking if there's any product that ends up coming out of here, that may be valuable for the business owner, once you kind of learn the lay of the land. Just documenting in a simple one-pager. Or if you find that magic one-pager, share it with us, you know, so. That's, that's valuable to be able to get people connected.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you, Dave. So Dave, you didn't like the martini to-go idea?
Did he have an opinion on it?
Well, Red Martini is a fabulous restaurant, so.
There you go. Oh, yes.
Oh, is this our?
That is the red line that staff made the changes for this morning on the wave sear. I also have the clean version. Um, if you're in agreement with those, those red lines, the clean version would be available for your signature today.
I'm so glad I picked up that one disused.
Yeah, yeah.
Wasn't that brilliant? Oh, my gosh. No, I mean, it was just so funny because my.
It's in the dictionary, yeah.
Goes, oh, no, that's a word, Patty. But I'm like, oh, my gosh, really? I just could see disgust there. And anyway, so that was kind of fun. Did they add the, um, did they add the other things about the saddle, bridle, tack, that in here, you know, for equipment?
I saw that. Um, that was on page.
I know we discussed it. We didn't actually, oh, here it is. Oh, yeah, it's on page, um, 14. Saddles, tack, helmets, et cetera. Oh, good, and they put in 14 months.
Got everything I see or saw.
Yeah, if the changes capture what you folks were looking for, then we would need a motion with regard to approval of document 2020-228.
Okay.
And it will note that the document indicates it was a two-to-one vote, so Commissioner DeBonne could vote to approve the document.
So you need a motion approving, say that again?
It's, uh, 2020-228.
Oh, yeah, okay. I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion that, um, for the Commissioners, approve document number 2020-228, decision on the wa- uh, wave seer land use decision.
And I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
I do second it in support of the, um, footnote on page seven, acknowledging that I was not involved with, uh, the 10 different, um, aspects of, um, youth activity center.
Again, just, and I'll, my only comment is again, just complimenting the CDD and legal staff to do such a fine job in the first draft that it'll be interesting to see what happens next, as always.
As always. Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And the Chair of both chests. Thank you. Well.
Take the rest of the day often.
Yes, go out for a nice hike with your children.
Which one? The Luba deadline on this?
Yes, please. Adam?
It's been a question that, uh, Adam Smith, Assistant Legal Counsel, it's been a question that I know has been asked of DLCD and other, uh, folks at the state, in the same way that there are state statutes that dictate that the county has only a certain, uh, period of time to issue decisions on land use matters. There are similar deadlines for Luba. Um, land use appeals are expedited matters. And there's been some conversation about what's gonna happen with, uh, everything else that's going on with coronavirus. And to date, there hasn't been any guidance, but, uh, the rumor is that we might hear something soon on some of these kinds of cases. Um, yeah, so I'll keep you posted. We have, I think, currently four or five Luba matters pending, so I'll certainly keep the Commissioners posted on, uh, those cases.
Thank you, Adam, very much. Okay, so. Sherry just, um, Representative Health just posted on Instagram, but I haven't looked up that. I'll, um, see if I can make note of it later. She does have the relationship with the health people.
Yeah, my comment was just, I'm surprised that some of the other legislators aren't doing things too.
I know.
I don't know if they're trying. I haven't heard from any of them or heard it.
I've, I've only, I've talked to Representative Zika and he wanted to get something together at the, um, Joint Information Center and that was on Friday and then we kind of pushed for it and then with all this happening.
Oh, yeah, he wanted to do something for the other city mayors.
Right, other, the city and the mayors.
Now it's a virtual information center.
Yeah, so now it's.
What does that mean, that they're no longer in the same building or what?
They're not all required to be there sitting at the same time now, trying, cause as I say, this, during a fire incident, when you have an incident command, they set up a tent or they have an office. Everybody gets in there, just grabs their coffee and sits in a row and everybody marches with the orders. Here, they're not getting in the room because of the nature of this case. So, but they're all getting on the phone, I'm sure, you know, they're communicating, uh, the way they would do it, but just not getting in the room.
So what else do we have?
So what else?
But other item, uh, email or a letter sent to us for, about Oregon Department of Veterans Affairs funding and Tom?
Yeah, uh, yeah, we, we got a, jumped on that, uh, some time ago. We had Greg look at it. Turns out they are, they are right where they need to be in terms of their staffing budget. But they do have some marketing initiatives. They got some money to do that, that are planned for the spring. So that, if you look at their percentage year-to-date, um, it looks low as.
Forty-four percent.
As they pointed out in the letter, but, you know, in terms of their, their true operational expense outside of the, the marketing campaign, the advertising, they're spot on. So I asked Eric to prepare a draft letter, uh, back to the state and pointing all that out and providing some documentation along with it, uh, that we should have to you, um, next week to look at.
Yep, so it was just kind of formal looking, wasn't it? We all got a, a letter in the mail and Eric Crop and Woods. Yeah, it was very formal looking and it just says we're underspending at Oregon Department of Veterans Affairs. Yeah, it was very formal looking and it just says we're underspending at Oregon Department of Veterans Affairs Fund.
I was at the veterans meeting when this was brought up, so I actually went and talked to her and I asked her where we were at and we were at 44%. So I wasn't surprised. Uh, but then I, when I talked to Eric about it, he said, you know, he would check and see. So they just, they don't want us not to spend the funding.
Yeah. But as I say, the way they sent it.
I know, they did it. Yes, let's, if they could just do more testing at the Hillsborough Lab, that would be great, wouldn't it? Let's like put our energy up there for now.
So it's been responded to and there's really, it's, there's scheduled items to spend dollars anyways.
Yeah, we've looked into it, uh, you know, we feel we're right where we should be in terms of our staffing. And Erica's drafting a letter that you'll see next week that points all that out to the state.
Thank you.
So, um, are we meeting, are we discussing the veterans under executive?
Yeah, we had, uh, we were hoping to, you wanted to talk about Veterans Village today, so I gave you a staff report, um, that you should have found in your box this morning on that. Uh, we were also, uh, time permitting, hoping to circle back with you on the Becky Johnson lease. And then I understand you have, uh, an employee vow that you were wanting to do today. So, um, we can, we're prepared to do those now if you like, or if you want to take a lunch break, we can, happy to accommodate whatever your wishes are.
A lunch break? That's right. There are no restaurants open now, right?
One right out here in the hall.
I know, I know. Um, oh, and, um, I did hear back from Annette regarding, uh, repurposing the room tax and they don't know yet, uh, to what date it would be a, um, retro. So, I don't know, did you want to take a lunch break for 15?
Yeah, yeah.
Do, is that okay?
That's fine, and then we'll go back to executive sessions.
Yes, and then we'll go back to executive session.
We're going to do that here.
Um, should we do that here?
Uh, is Darmend open? Do we record executive session?
Uh, just type, a desk, she's saying, for typing in the minutes.
Oh, okay, well, as long as we're not streaming it, uh, yeah, we could meet here.
Okay. Great, so we are going to adjourn for 15 minutes, which will be 25 till 3:00.